Present.
Here.
Um, do we have any of? Do we have anyone on Zoom who would like to make a budget comment or have a question? There any, anything in chat?
There is one that sounds.
Okay, great. All right, Angie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in front of you, you have the general fund twenty-five, twenty-six proposed revenue budget. Um, anticipated local revenues is three point five million, anticipated county revels revenues is six hundred thousand. Anticipated state revenues with reimbursements is twelve million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. These are estimates. I mean, nothing is in stone. It's us. It's the estimate. Um, our general fund carryover, um, is two million. I know that is not final because we have more bills that were coming out from June. Um, but that's the estimate on that. Um, relying on local revenues at twenty-six percent, four percent on county revenues, and relying on state revenues at seventy percent. Um, the state revenues do include reimbursements and all numbers are estimates.
And state revenues include what's funneled through federally as well, correct?
There is a question.
Okay.
Kylie would like to know, will this discussion involve what may happen with the after-school and summer rec program with the loss of federal grants?
Um, that is on our agenda under item G, discussion items.
Our fund carryover for twenty-five, twenty-six major maintenance had three hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. The lunch fund had fifty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two. The rec fund had eighty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight. Capital construction had that two thousand, four sixty-eight. Special revenue fund thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three. And the BOSIS fund had fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three. Um, they ended, the balances are from June twenty, twenty-five. They may not be final. There may still be some bills hanging out there that we'll put into June or have to account for anyways. Our proposed expenditures, um, for certified staff, um, these, this is wages, uh, six point five million. Administrators, nine hundred and fifty thousand. Directors are eight hundred and forty-three thousand. Counselors, two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Professional staff, which is your, um, like your speech, um. It's just a handful of staff. That's four hundred and sixty-six thousand. Support staff, three million, five hundred thousand. And supplies, utilities, all those extras, four million, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand. With our total expenditure budget of sixteen million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand. Now, those include benefits, um, your retirement, taxes, all the stuff that the district pays are. So that includes that. Um, in twenty-twenty-five, we approved sixteen million, two, seven hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred dollars for the budget, and our expenses were fourteen million, five hundred and seven thousand and forty-eight dollars for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, so the budget adoption for twenty-five, twenty-six, um, general fund sixteen million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand. Federal fund, one million. Major maintenance fund, one million, four hundred thousand. Lunch fund, four hundred and fifty-five thousand. Recreation fund is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, eighteen dollars. Agency fund, which is the BOSIS, uh, sixty-nine thousand, one seventy-nine. Special revenue fund thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three. Capital construction fund, two thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight. Are the twenty, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-six mill lobbies, our twenty-five district wide mills as required by statute, the six county wide mills required by statute. We have the one district wide mill to support the EW or Eastern Wyoming Western County Recreation District, District, which was approved in May, twenty-twenty-five, and the half district wide mill to support the EWC BOSIS approved in May of twenty-twenty-five. That is our proposed budget, final budget that could change, that we may have to amend or changes. It's. It's, uh.
All right. Does anyone have any questions?
What's the local?
The local way.
Local revenue come from what? What do they talk?
Backs to property tax.
Uh, yeah, it's a twenty-five mil.
So we get four percent from the county and the rest?
Yeah, yeah. Twenty-six percent from local.
Right, four percent from county, twenty-six local. Okay, um. I have a question. Is it possible or is there a way that the double aces, uh, to have it for one more year, we could use carryover funds?
That'd be supplanting, and I don't believe we can do that.
Okay, that's what I was worried about.
So, Madam Chair, and sorry, Angie, not to step on your toes. Um, there may be something that, that does change from the federal piece of that that may allow to do that, but then once you make that switch, then, um, I believe if the grant were to come back, then you might be stuck. Um.
Meaning?
So the supplanting issue right now is based on, once you use general fund, then you stay with the general fund. Now, unless the rules change, which they could change tomorrow morning. Um, there, there's a lot of uncertainty. My only concern with that would be is truly, as you look at the ADM, not only this year, but down the road. Um, eventually, we are probably going to lose programs just based on our ADM. Um, adding programs, which is all good for kids. I'm not arguing that. It's just that you're not going to be able to afford it all eventually. And then whether it be, whether it be ag, whether it be woods, I mean, it's not going to be math, English, science, or social studies, um, but it will be something. Um, and once you start using your general fund that way, um, it just is going to make it more and more difficult for you to, number one, keep pace with any budget. And I would also say that, you know, looking at just your teachers, we've got to have a pretty solid plan in trying to get that base to somewhere around sixty thousand dollars just to compete in recruiting and retaining.
So Angie, would you, um, explain supplanting for folks who don't know what that means?
So if you take something that is, is funded by a federal grant and you use general funds or any other funds to fund that, pay wages, buy supplies because you're short in the federal side, you are stuck paying with that out of the general fund. You can't, it cannot go back and be paid out of federal. So every year that our federal funds get reduced and we have to pay a little bit more out of general fund for wages or supplies for, um, you know, because some of our teachers' wages are out of like funding, a federal funding. We, we have, we can't ever go backwards. We have to keep paying for that out of general fund. Can never put it back. Does that explain how?
We may understand that.
Our federal funds, we, we have no idea on Title II. That's our staff development. We, we don't know. We can't have a plan without, so we're going to have to take that out of general fund. Um, Title I was forty thousand dollars short. We did not replace one of the positions that had resigned, so that helped there. So there's, I mean, but the other ones, you know, staff development, we are required to provide that and we will have to pay.
And last I knew, we had exceeded the number of days of that a few times.
To pay.
And last I knew, we had exceeded the number of days of that a few times. So we probably need to look at
calendar.
complying with the statute, but I know one, one year, there were like three or four more professional development days, I thought, than were required, but and, and it's great for teachers and kids, but we'll have to look at that. Okay, I knew with a carryover, there would be a question of why aren't we using that for our after schools?
I think the biggest concern is you're going to need a little bit of a cushion, knowing where you're going to be with ADM. And when you start looking at a fourth grade class, that's just a little ways way to being in the middle school. Um, once you get to the middle school and high school, you're going to be looking at programs. Um, and when you're looking at, you know, thirty or under forty students, um, something's going to give. Um, and you can do anything you want. You just can't afford everything you want.
Sean?
On the county, who sets the four percent?
The sales tax?
Yeah, the four percent.
The state of Wyoming.
Can we ask them for five?
We have our, we have our additional that the county does. Yeah, you have your additional that the county votes on.
They got to vote for.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you know, and here's the other thing, Madam Chair, that, that I think everyone needs to really be aware of is when you're talking federal money or even your state monies, um, our student issue is number one, but also at the state level, when the initiatives keep coming, where you're going to lower properties taxes and everyone gets excited about that. Um, and, and that's what they want to do, but remember, that'll be less money in the state to do the things that they want to do. Um, and education is really going to be one of those. I mean, we won a lawsuit. Um, well, I don't think we've lost a lawsuit.
Correct.
But remember, the Picas model still has never been fully funded. Um, so the two million dollars may look like access. Um, but I'll guarantee you, there'll be a time in the very near future, you're gonna, you're going to be really happy to have a little bit of cushion there. Um, and I would be willing to bet you next year at this time, this budget conversation is extremely different than it is right now.
Angie?
So, uh, and, and I know I've been here three years. I'm still learning, but so the funding, so our base teacher mate is fifty-one thousand dollars or fifty-one, five now, fifty-one, seven, fifty. But we only get funded like forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We do not get funded a hundred percent for anything. So that's where the carryover and, you know, comes in to help pay for stuff. Yeah. Nothing is, no wages are a hundred percent covered. We get a percentage and it goes by our ADM, so it's taken me three years to learn that, but yeah.
And Madam Chair, just to be a real devil's advocate, if you've got an extra hundred thousand dollars in your pocket, I know a pool that is in need of about a half million. Um, and again, that's just where we're at. I mean, I'm not saying the after-school program is not important. I'm not saying your activities aren't important. I'm just saying that we are not twelve hundred students like we were thirty-two years ago. And as things get smaller, things are going to have to get smaller. And we all like addition. Addition's fun. Subtraction's a son of a gun. And I think what we've done is anytime that somebody does leave and we can absorb that without losing a program, we have done so, um, reluctantly, but we have done it. Um, but eventually it will be, it will be a program or it'll be, you know, an activity, those kinds of things. It's just, we just dodged, we've dodged it so far, but you won't dodge it forever.
I would say we have used attrition as well as we possibly could.
Sean?
Chair, um, Brad, what do we have kindergarten registration this year? Do we know?
Thirty.
I believe when it was all said and done, um, at one time we were somewhere between thirty-five and thirty-eight, but just the other day we received at least one, um, student is not, is not going to attend. So until we really get there that day, um, let's say thirty-four to thirty-eight.
Okay.
Which a lot of school districts is a single section.
Anyone else have comments or questions about the budget? I would entertain a motion to approve the, the budget for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year.
Move the group second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Is there any discussion? I would just say this would be a lot easier if we could get the numbers we need from the state and federal government before we have to legally do this budget today, and that is not the case, so. Maybe that will happen again someday. We can all, hope, hope springs eternal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. All right. Our budget hearing is over and we go to old business, which there is none, early, new business, early graduation request.
Yes, so in your packet, um, you actually have the student's name. I'm not going to use the student's name, but my recommendation would be to approve the early graduation, um, based on, um, that's the high school principal's recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the request for early graduation from a student who will have all these graduation requirements by the end of the semester. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Certified resignation.
I would recommend to the board, um, resignation of Alondra Manaus on, as an elementary teacher.
We have a motion?
Madam Chair. I would, I would move to accept the resignation with regret.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified resignation from Alondra Munoz as an elementary teacher with regret. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Classified transfer.
Yes, I would recommend to the board to transfer Jackie Guzman from an elementary kitchen assistant to the middle school, high school kitchen assistant.
It's been moved and seconded, and I will say that our, our motion did not include middle school, so we will include that since he added that. Um, it's been moved and seconded to approve the classified transfer of Jackie Guzman from elementary kitchen assistant to middle school, high school kitchen assistant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Classified transfer.
I would also recommend to the board the transfer of Tracy Lamb from a five-hour position, um, to a six-hour position in the, um, kitchen.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified transfer for Tracy Lamb from a five-hour to six-hour position. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion is carried. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend, um, to the board, the resignation of Lawrence Egger as the custodian and permission to post.
Move to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified resignation from Lawrence Egner as custodian and to post's position. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend Michaela Stevenson as special ed paraprofessional.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Michaela Stevenson as a special ed paraprofessional. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Certified recommending, oh, I'm sorry, classified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, Clace, Clacy Domina as a special education paraprofessional.
This place is full of, you can tell the people that like to be with old people because they really take care of you good and are very kind.
Place a day, every day, activities, people have an organized activity that's always interesting.
Everybody loves to play bingo. We play it three times a week here. We also have ceramics that you can paint. Really pleasant to live here. It's a good place to be.
I'm sorry, classified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board, Clace, Clacy Domina as a special education paraprofessional.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Clacy Domina as a special education paraprofessional. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Classified res- resignation.
I would recommend the resignation of Laleen Carter as a middle school special education paraprofessional and permission to post.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified resignation from Laleen Carter as a middle school special ed paraprofessional and to post the position. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Certified recommendation.
Thank you for that first move because without that, that would make the second one even more difficult. So I would recommend to the board, Laleen Carter, um, at the elementary as a teacher, and it is a one-year position. And it's, um, to help with, uh, uh, higher student numbers in trying to get us positioned down the road. And that's why it's one year because there's no numbers behind this to support that that position would stay.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified recommendation for Laleen Carter as a one-year elementary teacher. And my only discussion is I, I really appreciate how we, uh, we grow some of our own best employees. That's, that says a lot about the district. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Certified recommendation.
I would recommend to the board Alexis Volker, soon-to-be Ingle as an elementary teacher.
Move second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the certified recommendation for Alexis Volker Ingle as an elementary teacher. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, is there a motion? We moved, okay. Oh, recommend, all right, phew. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend Scott Garhart as a maintenance tech.
Move to approve.
Is there any, is we moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Scott Garhart as a maintenance tech. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion is carried. Classified recommendation.
I would recommend Kelly Wellman as the kitchen assistant.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the classified recommendation for Kelly Wellman as a kitchen assistant. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. M revisions to the school district athletic and activities handbook.
Yes, so I would recommend to the board, um, with those revisions as in your packet, um, the athletic and activity handbook for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the revisions to the school district athletic and activities handbook. Is there any discussion? Sean? Thank you.
So if I read this right, if it gets in trouble, Saturday counts as a, a day for like six days, so, but Sunday does not, right?
That's the way I read it as well.
Okay, I'm just reading that. And then there's one more.
Because activities can actually take place on a Saturday. They can't take place on a Sunday.
Gotcha. Okay, and then down here, who is our sports medical staff?
So right now, it includes anybody that comes out of the hospital. Um, primarily, I guess if you needed a name, it would probably be Shanae.
Okay, okay.
Um, but it, it is, there's multiple people that they rotate for games because that was the way that we were able to walk away from the ambulance, always having to be at football games, big wrestling tournaments and things of that nature. Um, we don't really just use a name, but we contract, um, with the hospital for anybody that has that training.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion is carried. Elimination of policy LBC dash E relations with homeschool standardized form for reporting basic academic educational program of a home-based education program.
Yes, and this is just basically to keep us in alignment with the new state law where they no longer, um, have to do that, so um, it's sort of was, I think, ridiculous to keep a policy that was going to be in conflict with state law.
It's been moved and seconded to eliminate policy LBC dash E because, um, it is no longer required under state statute. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Oh, board meeting date. And before I accept the recommendation, the WEP board is meeting September twenty-third. So could we move it to Thursday, the twenty-fifth? You're, okay.
Madam Chair, as long as you'd be comfortable with somebody on the leadership team could do the board meeting. I mean, I don't have to do a board meeting, um, but I am supposed to be, um, in Laramie till, till that Saturday.
Um, and I have to travel on Monday to do that, so.
I do have another recommendation, if you just want to skip one. Merry Christmas early.
What?
Just do, just do one, just do one board meeting in September, Madam Chair. Just, just a thought.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just, we'll table this. Um, or, or no, we'll just not do this one today. We'll see how, see if we have to, if we really need to schedule a second meeting for September.
Business managers just hate the idea that we just can't pay everything in two-week intervals.
All right, so we'll move on to P, policy on firearms. So what some of us talked about what some of us talked about doing in order to keep, be able to ensure the district against liability because it's our understanding, our interest does not cover accidental or purposeful discharge, injury, trauma, whatever. Without adding a rider for individuals who will be individual staff members who will be carrying on campus. Would be to um, get whatever, write a policy that gets whatever specific information the insurance company needs. For example, uh, name, permit number, um, probably position in the district. I'm assuming they wouldn't need a whole lot else. But that's what some of us were talking about doing. I, I don't see this going away. In the near future. But, yes.
Is there a reason we can't have a procedure that says that rather than a policy?
Cause policies, policies dictate our procedures, right?
Policy usually is more directed towards law kinds of issues, state law. Procedures can also be best practices. My thought, and again, this isn't fair to Abby because I have not even visited with Abby about this. Um, but if somebody would come and say, you know, what, what is it that the state or what is it that the school would require me if I chose to do this? Um, does that not put you in the same spot um, for insurance and everything else? Knowing that, I think, I, I just am not in favor of a policy. That's, I think it gets you in the same spot.
How do we get liability insurance without an employee being able to look at the policy for that?
Do you have hope? Do you have faith for, for Weston County and for, and for education in Weston County? Do you feel good about the future here?
Yes, generally. I think we have some major challenges. Uh, and, and some of those we have not we as such in Weston County, but some of us, the, the people in the state of Wyoming have brought on ourself a little bit. We, the big majority of us think it's important not to overspend. But we've salted away an awful lot of money in the state of Wyoming. Uh, and at a time when perhaps we needed to do some work on swimming pools and on schools and on city streets and city sewers and city dumps.
How do we get liability insurance without an employee being able to look at the policy for that?
They would come to us just like they would have to with the policy and we would say these are our protocols that we highly recommend that you do. That'd be my thought.
I don't understand, that's confusing to me. How do you have, ask an employee to do something that's not part of policy? I mean, where, where can they look that up then?
You could write it down and, and have it in the staff handbook, uh, under, under your guidelines. If somebody chose to do this, this is what you highly recommend. Would be my thought. I'm not an attorney. I shouldn't, I am out of my lane. Um, and this isn't fair to Abby because she's not on here. It was just a thought that I had that if the only real issue is liability, I think there's a way to get you there. I still think there's a lot of conversation about whose training are you going to accept? And whose are you not?
Well, but that was, we weren't gonna get, it was my, anyway, in our, in our in an informal discussion, we weren't gonna get into listing that because we wanted it to just be really simple, whatever we needed to get the insurance. And so in an emergency situation where first responders are come, come in, we can tell them who in the building will have a gun.
But Madam Chair, as frequently as we have emergency responders change, i.e. law enforcement, I'm not sure we're going to be able to convey that to them in a timely matter anyway. I think when they come in, what they're really looking for is the weapon and they're going to try to neutralize that as quickly as possible or the threat, whatever it be. Um, hostage situation, you know, the idea is we're not waiting outside anymore. Just a thought, just, I mean.
So then, what you're saying is we need to get some legal advice on whether or not a procedure would accomplish the same thing as a policy?
That would just be a thought that I had. I still think, you know, here's where I'm stuck, guys. So I'm off the street and I know that I'm not with kids every day, but I still have exposure to students. I work for you. I want to help protect kids. I choose to carry the firearm. Why do I have all this extra stuff knowing that really, once I go to use that, I'm still gonna be probably at the center of focus, whether it be wrongful death or, or whatever the two that Abby, you know, mentioned there. Um, and here's the other thing I would tell you with insurance companies, every time it seems like we need them the most, they're, they're their least. And just because we have the coverage doesn't mean it's gonna cover you because if you're negligent, you're negligent. I mean.
Right, and that's, I mean, the nine of us took an oath and part of that includes protecting the district. We've done a lot of other things to protect ourselves against liability, many, many things. So I think I, I just, it's really hard for me to say I'm willing to let the district be hanging out there with that without any liability coverage. Tyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a problem pondering even creating a policy at this point in time, just with discussions between the board and that. We don't know what the liability policy covers. Does it cover accidental discharge? Does it cover purposeful discharge? What is it not going to cover? And we're still gonna be liable regardless.
Right.
We don't have enough information to say, yes, we need a, or we're gonna create one, or no, we're not.
So that's, we, that's why we're having the discussion so that we can, then we'll ask Angie to find out exactly what information the insurance company needs and, and to actually see what the rider would look like. Cause we're already past the date. Um, Paul?
So broken record time, have, has anybody else on the board taken the time to go like to Amazon and look at the burner launchers? Yeah, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars. They're cool. They're non-lethal. Every time I talk to a law enforcement person about this, because it does come up in discussions, we end up just saying, why? Why don't have, why don't all schools have these, at least at the entrances? Because the biggest hangup I've had with people that I've talked to is, and in this world, I'm sorry, this might upset some people, I don't care. There's three types of people in this world, a wolf, a sheep, or a guard dog. You're one of the three and you better figure out which one you are. And if you're a sheep, that's fine. But you better find out how to get behind a guard dog real quick. Cause when the wolves show up, you better not be in their way. And I've had people say, I don't think I could kill a kid that I've been teaching because I know that kid, I love that kid. I completely understand that. I, I understand that. With this system, there's not that hesitation of I'm going to kill a student. It's, well, I'm gonna smack little Johnny upside the head with some pepper balls and he's gonna be crying and gagging until the cops get here to put cuffs on him. Now, insurance-wise, I don't think that it would cost us because you don't have to have a license to have these. You can buy them at eighteen, they're less than lethal. Win-win, as far as I'm concerned.
So are you saying, would you like to have? Eh, if, if you gave her all the information about those to also ask the insurance company, what we're looking at with that as well?
Sure, and that's what I'm saying, because it's like, every time I've asked about insurance, they say that because it's less than lethal, you'd granted, it's not like I've asked the schools' policy owners, but like just Joe Blow walking down the street, they don't have to have anything special because it's less than lethal. So you don't have to worry about all this hanging over your head. To me, there's so much less worry with this kind of a system. No matter what the situation is. If you've got somebody breaking into the school, it stops them. If you have an unruly drunk parent trying to do something in the parking lot, you don't have to worry because this is less than lethal. It will either stop their behavior or, or incapacitate them until the police get there to handle it.
Yeah, I, I really do like the idea of those and I've, I've looked at there are other schools in the country who do have those available as well. I mean, so if you'll get all that information to her.
And if I could just add one more thing, going along with those people that don't like guns, they hate guns. You can hand them a water pistol and they're fine with squirting a water pistol. This isn't a water pistol, but when they know it's not going to do damage or go bang, it's a lot easier for them to handle. And people that aren't necessarily comfortable with guns have no problem with this. So I know you think I'm a salesman, I'm not. I, I just, I'm really impressed with the, it's, I'm really impressed with this, with this tool.
I, I agree. So we'll task Angie with getting us that information going forward, done? And so with the board's permission, we'll just table this until we have all that. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
And I think we also need to talk to Abby too and see if a procedure will cover us.
Yes. I, I will ask her that. Okay. We are moving on into for your information. Got a tech report? Now, Angie?
Don't have anything else, Madam Chair.
Adam Erbman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just got a couple of quick ones. Um, the roof project on top of the middle school is about to be done. Um, we'll do the final walkthrough Monday. They'll have a few touch-ups to do, um, they're on schedule, even though we've had a couple of rain days. They s- the roof contract that we signed for them to come inspect the roofs, those guys just got done today. They were here for three days out at Oregon. Um, walked all over roofs and will give us a report so we can give the insurance and and that, just lots of little jobs start to wrap up before school starts.
So do you, do you think that, did we have damage from that Sunday, that last Sunday in June? Did, did it, did you, did the big hail hit in this part of town?
I was out of town, I don't know. Um, I do know on top of the high school, they found one ripped boot around a pipe, a rubber boot, um. They replaced and repaired the boot, that part of the contract, um. And as far as I know, that's all they found. Um, I'm sure they found some minor stuff, but they didn't find anything bigger, they would have told us.
Excellent.
The new store, this is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop, certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Around a pipe, a rubber boot, um. They replaced and repaired the boot, that part of the contract, um. And as far as I know, that's all they found. Um, I'm sure they found some minor stuff, but they didn't find anything bigger, they would have told us.
Excellent.
Are you gonna block off the middle school parking lot?
For that, I'm going to the mountains.
While you leave, are you gonna block off? Cause we, we didn't want anybody parking there, right? So we can get that contractor.
The plan is, my plan is, I don't know what they're doing with the parking lot itself is the red gate on both ends, we got padlocks on. Um, we'll lock that tomorrow, three, four o'clock. The walk gate onto the football field will be locked, so the football field will be totally locked up all the way around. I'll throw the chains across um, like between the Voag building and that line of trees there, from that garage door, that chain will be crossed and locked. The chain between the football leechers and that other little island will be crossed and locked. Um, other than that, I don't know what they're blocking.
Cause didn't we talk about blocking off the middle school parking lot?
We did.
Yeah, I don't know whatever, what you guys decide to do with that. But there were supposed to be, the initial talk was Jersey barriers. Um, I don't know if they're gonna get with, so I'm gonna put lock on.
Yeah, some way they can get
Yeah.
vehicles in and out if they needed to.
And we'll have keys. Brad, Brad will have a key, um, and the maintenance Todd will be on call. He'll have a key to, to all the gates if we need it there. Um, the the gym floor guy is here, um, he's hoping to be done Friday midday. He'll lock all the gates back up when he leaves. So hopefully we don't have anybody here.
I guess the question is then, do we still want to block off the middle school parking lot and the bus loop? Cause people will be going in there if we don't.
I think we wanna block it off. I just don't know if we have the means of, uh, do we have, we don't have. I hear you, um.
Do we park maintenance vehicles across? Sean says he has something.
If we could borrow several barriers.
Just long as he can get a, a pickup and a trailer out Friday. Probably, maybe.
They're not too bad. Dean, did you have something?
Oh, okay. And we want Jersey barriers on middle school parking lot and bus loop, correct? Isn't that correct?
That's, yeah, that was, but I, I did say.
I apologize, I thought that's what we asked them to do. And I thought we asked them to do that, but
We did. So that's why I'm gonna throw chains and.
I wouldn't count on them doing it.
I'm a little concerned about that. Do we wanna call them tomorrow and, and ask to make sure they're gonna do that? Do we? Would you guys be able to come? I, I shouldn't use the word we. Do we have a cut, yeah? Did you understand it? Just to make certain. Cause that's gonna cost a lot more people to me trying to walk around and.
You have the yellow tape? You have any of that?
I do, I got a couple of big rolls of it. If not, I can go get some.
Okay.
Do you, do you need?
Yeah, I'll do it. I, I gotta set up the barriers for the.
Yeah. We appreciate it, thank you very much.
You want me to do it?
Yes, please.
Who else in the bill to?
The former, former board clerk.
I can go with you, Sean, tomorrow and I'll give you a couple of big rolls of tape.
Yeah, perfect. You call me.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate that. Anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, and we'll let you do your thing. Brad, do you have anything? Board members, meetings, you had one today.
Wasn't terribly exciting. We finalized the budget. Sorry.
Thank you.
Our EWC BoC's met, they finalized the budget. We'll meet again in November at Fall Conference.
Yes, please.
First of all, was there any decline in, in their budget?
Their preliminary from May, there was a, not for us, but some of it declined. From different counties, they had a better estimate from their, I suppose their assessors.
And was there any discussion about funding or different changes of funding for dual and concurrent credit?
There was not.
That's, okay.
Okay, um, any any other board member reports? I have one, um. I attended the town hall with Representative Hagerman. Here, um. In Crouch Auditorium. And while most people were talking about her support of the sale of public lands. Um, I visited with her um at length about the provision in that omnibus bill that forced absolutely no regulation of any kind by any state or publics or any state or political subdivision of which school districts are a political subdivision of the state. Um, to have any regulations or or slowdown or to ever say anything about um AI. Artificial intelligence, not to be confused with A one sauce. For the next ten years, that meant we would not be able to write a policy that says a kid can't turn in a paper that's generated by AI. And she she did not agree, but she 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 did agree that that could be an unintended consequence of that language. I, she put me in touch with one of her um assistants. I left uh messages explaining why that's particularly problem. Uh. Why that's a particular problem for educational institutions from K through PhDs. So, um, fortunately. That was stripped out of the bill. So we don't have to worry about that. Um. And I I I was able to visit with um some folks who teach English and um some other folks who had major concerns about that as well, so. So that was good news and and I actually I appreciated that she was open to hearing that, so. Um, appreciate that very much. All right, future agenda items. Um, I thought. Let's see. We'll look at our insurance and a possible procedure or policy about concealed carry and getting liability coverage for that. Um, I also thought we we could uh go over all of our committee uh membership and I had said it would be nice if we could all, if all of our committees could meet before school starts and then I looked at the calendar, so. It would be great if every committee could meet before the end of the year. That would, that would be ideal, so. Um, we'll go over those and see what we can do there then. Anyone else have future agenda items? No.
Madam Chair, I do hope soon we should have more information on on federal funding as well. Um, that'll be um, literally, I think it could change daily, but hopefully by next board meeting. Um, we have a better understanding of that and then also the ongoing legislation or legal fight with the E C A money and and homeschool students and how that's all going to play out.
Yes, those those funds were uh frozen.
Correct.
Yes, so there the uh judge has told them they cannot issue the seven thousand dollar vouchers at this time because of the uh questions about its constitutionality. So that is frozen out this time. Okay. Now, discussion item, uh double aces and funding that program.
Yeah, so really, it's it's not anything new. It's it's just to put it on everyone's radar, but um, this is one of those programs that is federally funded. Um, we were hoping to have an answer um, prior to this meeting. We still don't have an answer. Um, but with that, it's only fair to let people know that if something does not change at the federal level. There will not be funds um available for that program. Um, and the answer isn't gonna come soon enough, so. Everybody in the United States is sort of on pins and needles. Um, some districts are you know, in different phases in their grant and a five-year grant. Um. Angie spoke to it earlier, um, you know, when funds go away. There's just no way to 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 keep these kinds of things that that we like to have for students, so. Um. You know, this is an informational piece, so I think it's only fair to let parents know. Because if you don't have daycare, trying to find daycare at the last minute is is miserable. Daycare in itself is not easy. Um, our night care or latchkey care or student care. Um, but there is a, there is a possibility that this thing is definitely up in the air, folks. And I think it was a question that was answered answered earlier and um, you know, could you use general funds? Yes, um, that would not be my recommendation. Um, your general funds are gonna have to be to try to keep your staffing patterns as close to what you would like and and some kind of a benefit package. Um, your general funds are gonna have to be to try to keep your staffing patterns as close to what you would like and and some kind of a benefit package. Um, that is competitive with other kinds of school districts our size.
It it would be great if policymakers understood that their political theater is hurting kids. Um, Mister Fitzpatrick.
Um, I I guess kind of the question is there, I think we probably need to inform the community right away. I mean, the the sooner the better. Just tell them, yeah, hey, this might not, or this isn't happening as of now, be prepared. Could change in the future. I mean, get that out, cause we're.
I think that was the number one piece was to be transparent, so.
Cause we're a month.
You know, you're not walking into it with the idea that, man, I wish I'd have known this a month ago. When my family moved here and that was our main course of a plan. Or whatever it may be.
Especially with a month away, I mean.
Well, and I think information is important as as people continue to vote um and understand that. Um. Public education is not the fat pig running around just throwing money left and right, guys, and and I I agree, I I like paying less taxes, but then you also have to understand that what I like is going to come back on another end, whether that be your city roads, your sewer, your kids' programs, I mean, it goes on and on, but things are changing and they're changing at a different rate and so this is just a communication piece. Um, but it's not fair to not let people know that it's out there. That'd be my, Angie's the expert.
It's. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna say, so how this program works is the um I process payroll and then that grant pays the general fund back. And there's like a thousand dollars left in the grant, so. And we're already, what, three days into the next payroll, so. Just a heads up. So. Sean.
Need to get a letter out right away. And we're gonna be in the negative? Is that what you're telling us?
And I would like to add the following phone numbers to that letter, if you feel like it. Hey, Megan Degenfelder, three zero seven 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 six seven five, John Barrasso, two zero two 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 four. I will give you all these. John Barrasso, two zero two 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 four six four four one, Cynthia Lummis, two zero two 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 four 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 seven six. Harriet Hagerman, two zero two 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 five two three one one. Chip Nyman, three zero seven two nine zero zero three six six. Ogden Driscoll, three zero seven six eight zero five 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 five. Sherry Steinmetz, three zero seven five three four five three four two. J D Williams, three zero seven three four zero six zero zero six and Governor Gordon, three oh seven 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 four three four. Those are the folks who can make sure that we get enough money to continue double aces and summer school and and all these things, so. I will post all those on social media as well for anyone who wants to get them from there, but um. It's kind of, uh, they've made it out of our control and and the delays in telling us whether or not we get funding are inexcusable as far as this person is concerned, so. Any other comments? Or speeches? About double aces, it breaks my heart, cause I know a lot of our families depend on this. Kids benefit from it. The percentage of participation is really high and it's a consequence of our own actions, so. Sorry to say that. Does anyone have anything else? Thank you all very much, um. We did note that there was no one here, but there there was one question, and I will say in nine years of doing budgets for this board, that's the first question I've ever had during a budget hearing in nine years. So the people who complain about budgets don't show up to participate. But thank you for the person who did. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
We'll call the Eastern Weston County Recreation Board to order. Um, you have an agenda in front of you. I have no changes to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? And properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion on it? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Agenda's approved. Are there any recognitions? Uh, see none, we'll move move on to visitors, comments, staff input and special program.
Mister Chairman, I'm sorry, I meant to uh recognize uh Kathy Beeler for being so dedicated to the pool for so long and and I don't wanna steal that from you either. You say what you wanna think too, but um, um, a lot of kids uh learned how to swim and and spend a lot of time. And so thank you Kathy for being a great pool manager.
Thank you for that, and I'll definitely second that, so. Um. See no other recognitions, visitors, comments, staff input and special programs. See none, action items. You have a consent agenda in front front of you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move second.
Been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion on this? See none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. I see no old business, no new business. Um. Well, going on to for your information, um, there is some stuff to be in discussion items, but if there's anything else in for your information that anybody has. See none, discussion items. Um. In your packet. We have a letter. Um. Hopefully, everybody's got to read that. Therese, can I have you go ahead and speak on that, please?
Uh, a couple of things, I've tracked the pool usage and so I made my recommendation for summer doesn't doesn't necessarily have to be decided tonight, but e- especially this last three weeks, it's been a lot slower in the evenings. And so my recommendation to save money, especially if we're getting cuts in the rec board, is to reduce pool hours. It'll save on staff, um. And because there's several nights, especially in the winter, that we're we don't have any kids coming and I think if we could open it less and funnel people there and make more use of our staff as well as kids coming, so that was my recommendation going there. And then the second item is, is typically we shut down this weekend. And then close the pool down for three weeks and do all the maintenance and cleaning and stuff, and that's not happening this year. And so I just, you know, I put a rough estimate of what it would cost to keep it open those additional weeks. Um, my recommendation would to keep it, to close it on the second or third on that Sunday. Um, because two reasons, Kathy's uh day, last day is April or August fourth. And so then there, you know, until the next board meeting, when you guys decide what you wanna do with that position, then you know, we don't have to worry about trying to figure out how to do things with guards and stuff. And then I put my input for uh having myself, if you guys want me to take that position on. Um, but also have in a secondary, cause basically I'm Kathy's secondary, so when Kathy was gone, I covered for her. If I take it over, I don't have a secondary, which is where I recommended Kaylee. She was a guard in high school. She already works for the school district. She's a lifeguard cer- certified and I, that's why I sent the clarification out. It's not, at the same time, she basically subbed for me when I'm gone on vacation or what whatnot, so.
Um, can we see, you know, we don't have future agenda items, but can we get those recommendations on a future agenda item to be approved in the and the action items, please? Yes, correct.
We were gonna do that. For the board to be able to give input moving forward, if that's the direction they wanted to go, or if that's not the direction you wanna go to provide input on a different direction. And then also, um, Angie, with the loss of, what is the loss of revenue through that mill? Was it thirty percent?
No, it's ten percent. It was like, it it was supposed to be like fifteen thousand, it only ended up being ten thousand. So.
Yes.
I would, I would say, I think this sounds like a good proposal.
Do, do we have motion to approve this?
Well, we we don't have it under business, but just I didn't have any.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions, please. I'll answer them the best I can.
No, I liked it. I liked it too, so. Um. I do wanna add something. This is not, this is off of that subject, um. Wanna apologize the confusion, um. I got an email about the closure of the school and the road. I'm still kind of unclear on exactly what days are happening this weekend for drag races and autocross. Okay, cause we had him come in and it was noted in the minutes of the switch of days. So, yep.
But they didn't switch.
But they didn't switch. It was.
I didn't know either.
Yeah, so. Little disappointed on that piece of communication. I'd like to say that, but thank you for clarifying that, cause I wasn't a hundred percent for sure on that. Um. Is there anything else needs to be discussed? All right, meeting adjourned.